Here, why don't we start the meeting and we'll go ahead and begin with our pledge of allegiance. Last time I said, repeat after me. That's that's not the right thing. It's let's begin itself. Let's pledge allegiance, shall we? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, everyone. It's Kristen. Would you please do the roll call?
Alternate wall. She's not here. Alternate Wu.
Present.
Trustee Sedun.
Present.
Trustee Osagüela.
Present.
Trustee Derry.
She's muted. Lois, unmute, please, so we know you're here.
And Lois, I don't know if you're aware, we don't see you either. If you want to turn on your video. You're now unmuted.
I'm unmuted, and I don't know how I get the my face up there.
In the lower left corner, it has a little icon of a camera. It says, start video or stop video.
Yes. Oh, I see.
Click on that, then we'll get to see your pretty face. There you are.
Trustee Chen.
Present.
And Chairperson Doemeyer.
Present. Thanks, everybody, for being here. The agenda, of course, was posted seventy-two hours prior to each meeting in City Hall, at the library, Stoneman, and also on the city's website. Have we received any public comments?
We did not.
All right. Good for us. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Let me begin with the item number one on our agenda, the chairperson's report. I wanted to welcome two people on this call, the Foundation Director Cindy Chan and the current president Sue. I have no idea how to say her last name, too. Viso Wathney?
Viswa Nathan. Viswa Nathan.
Viswa Nathan. President Viswa Nathan. Very nice having you here. Appreciate it. We look forward to hearing from you in a little bit. So welcome for being here. I wanted to just start off my my report by noting the passing of former board member Eldon Swanson. I was privileged through my participation on this board to know Eldon and was really impressed by his intelligence, work ethic, attention to detail, and gentle spirit. He was a terrific guy. Eldon had a way of making just really well-reasoned, forceful arguments, but but in a really kind way. He would be passionate about something, but he would always gather consensus around him because of his calm, sensible delivery to how he was presenting his arguments. He was always on the size of reasonableness and was unafraid to dive deep into the details of whatever issues we as a board happened to face. It was due in large part to his research and passion and advocacy that we now have the library's RFID checkout system. And and it was really, really remarkable. His tenure with our board ended while we were still under COVID restrictions, unfortunately. So he was unable to receive the well-deserved accolades from the community upon his retirement from the board. So I, you know, it was it was kind of sad that that wasn't able to do that. But of course, Eldon didn't do this service for the accolades. He was doing it to benefit our community, which was pretty remarkable. It was in his nature to be unserviced to all of us, and I think San Marino is going to continue to be blessed by the contributions he made for many years to come. Personally, Eldon showed me what an effective board member was like, and I try to strive to follow his example. And so I just just wanted to note his his passing and the effect that he had on all of us. I also want to say I was I was very grateful for the the city. On a separate note, putting together this handbook for us, our Public Library Board of Trustees Handbook, I found that to be incredibly useful tool, and I appreciated City Clerk Baker's training of all of us at our last meeting. Personally, again, I'm finding that participating in this board and on the San Marino Task Force, San Marino Center Task Force has made me a more knowledgeable and informed citizen, and I hope better citizen of the city. And to our new board members, I hope that your experience on on our board is equally rewarding because I know more about the city now than I'm participating in, especially after last week's training. I'm always grateful for the contributions that people like Eldon do and our city council members who get paid absolutely nothing to give up all of their time and expertise to to guide our city. And of course, I'm always grateful to the city staff who are overworked and underappreciated. So good, I'm on the record for that. All right. With that said, let's move on. That's the end of my chairperson report. Let's go on to our trustee reports. Let's see, how should I do this in order? Is there any particular order I need to go in, Kristen, following? Or or just how it appears on my Zoom screen?
Any order you prefer.
Zoom is fine. All right. Well, on my screen, on my Brady Bunch box here, I've got Kathy Asagüeta on in the in on the far left here. So Kathy, do you have anything you wish to report to the board?
Nothing. Thank you, Steve. Nothing, nothing special. Just shared that we took a quick trip to San Francisco last weekend, and we have the privilege to visit Alcatraz with my kids, and and I can counter the library, the Alcatraz Library, which was a constant reminder of, you know, how special and important libraries are, you know, in in our lives.
Even in prisons, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They were, right? It was pretty cool to see that they had a pretty big space designated for them, for the inmates there. So it was it was a cool thing to do. Yeah.
Thank you, Kathy. Deborah, we'll we'll get to your Crane Library report in just a second. Do you have anything separate you wanted to talk about on the in terms of a trustee report?
No, Steve.
Okay, great. And then I think next I'll take Genevieve Chen to block. She's in the middle. What, Genevieve, do you have anything you wish to report?
I would, but now that we have Cindy here, and I I don't think that I should be doing this. Is that?
Well, yeah, that that'll be separate. We'll get to your 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 passing on of the baton when we get to our fifth or sixth agenda item. But anything separate from from that report?
Other than that, I don't think I have anything else to report.
Okay, great. And that leaves Lois. Do you have anything you need to report to the board?
Do you want to? I blast out to the friends and the friends.
Well, we will also get to the we'll get to the friends in just a second. We're going to go in order. This is just in general, anything separate from your individual reports. Okay, great. Sandy?
Nothing to report.
All righty, and Vivvy's not with us. Okay. Okay, that's right. Now now we'll get to Deborah and the Crane Art Gallery report.
All right.
Number three.
Good morning. Before I begin, before I begin with the specifics of the of the gallery, the Crane Gallery, I just wanted to I wanted to do a shout out to Linda Lyons. Linda Lyons has been shepherding the Crane Art Gallery since its conception. She is an amazing individual, and I think she's really an unsung hero at the library. She's a library assistant and has been for many years. She's knowledgeable about everything beyond she's at the reference desk and she contributes in so many ways. But I think she's sort of one of these modest behind-the-scenes individuals. So I just want to say I am thankful because I've been on the on the Crane Art Gallery Committee for a number of years, and without her guidance, her dedication, I don't know where we'd be. She works with each artist. She accepts the proposals. She communicates with them. She she identifies things that need to be done to keep the gallery in tip-top shape, and I'm just grateful. And so perhaps the next time you're at the library and you you see Linda, you can thank her, you know, for all her dedication. So, all right, the gallery is doing extremely well. It is booked with exhibits into February of 2023. So there's wonderful things ahead. This week, a new a new exhibit is coming about. Wang Shili will be hanging her exhibit, and she's having a reception at the library. I don't think it's been canceled with the latest COVID numbers. I haven't heard from Linda that there's been any change, but the reception will take place at the library this Saturday from three to four. Her work, I would describe as, I guess, sort of brushstrokes with a particular focus on animals. She was born in China. She studied at the Fine Arts Academy there, but she moved to the United States about twelve years ago. She her work has been exhibited all over the world, South Korea, Japan, and other places in in Europe, as well as the US. And so we're really pleased to have her. Rosa Z, in fact, who many of you know, has been helping her with because of language issues. So Rose has sort of been the liaison with this upcoming exhibit. I think in the one sentence to describe what she's trying to communicate in this exhibit is she has a fondness for animals, and she's trying to show sort of a harmonious existence, coexistence. She wants to encourage a coexistence between humans and nature, and a lot of tigers of her work will be on exhibit this week. So but let me just give you a couple of numbers because that's the numbers are important, too. We've had nearly $2,000 in in the last fiscal year donated through various artists at the library. Expenditures were about $350 for light bulbs. And finally, we have our in reserves a current balance of $13,992. So that about sums up the Crane Art Gallery.
Thank you. Are there any questions from anyone on the board? For Deborah? All right, then we'll move to our fourth agenda item, the San Marino Center renovation update report, and that's me. So this Friday is a really important date in this project, as the city council will be voting to approve one of the pre-approved bids for the renovation of the center. As we've talked in the past, this structure is going to be a valuable complement to the library. And when it's completed, it will relieve some of the burden of use on the bathroom. So we're we're excited about that. If you can attend this Friday's meeting, the city council, eight thirty AM, to be in person, I highly encourage you to do so. If you want to just participate via Zoom, I know you're all good at participating via Zoom by your presence here today. I I encourage you to do that as well. There was a full-page ad in the Tribune you may have seen this week from some detractors of the library, which it's amazing where they came up with that number. They're just kind of imagining things. But of course, you don't have to stick to the truth when you're just anti-something. So there's always in this town, as we know, a small group of people who are against any kind of improvement or progress whatsoever. But I really think this structure is going to complement our library and the experience of living in San Marino. And your presence at that meeting this Friday morning will show the community support for this really important project. Councilman Udi, do you want to make any comments on this project, which you labored so hard?
No, I agree with you, Steve. I think it's really important to go forward with this, and some things that people don't understand is that if we don't remodel the San Marino Center, it essentially gets red-tagged. It's not not fit to be inhabited. And just to bring it up to ADA minimum standards, it's like three and a half million bucks, something like that. So when I look at the total, and we've already spent maybe a million, million and a half in architectural fees and environmental impact studies. So when you look at the cost from where we are today going forward, it's not an $8 million project. It's kind of a three or four million dollar decision. You know, so I think it's important that we we move forward with it. And then also, you know, it was January of 2020. This city had $30 million in the bank, and this last month we had $46 million in the bank. So in the last year and a half, we've banked $15 million in our capital improvements and our reserve funds. So we are not like the school district. You know, the city is doing just fine financially. So I think it's important to move forward and, you know, fix our aging infrastructures because if we don't fix it today, it's going to be more expensive to fix it a year from now. So unfortunately, it's a it's a big number, but I think in the long-term interest of the city, it's the the important thing to do.
Thank you. Any any questions, comments on the San Marino Center? Renovation? No? Okay, great. Let's move on then to agenda item number five, the Friends of the Crow Public Library Liaison Report. Lois, what do you got to tell us?
I have nothing to tell you. The meeting has been postponed three times, and it is now at ten thirty this morning. So I will have a report at the next meeting. But it in that ad about San Marino Center, the slam against the Crow Library, the seventy percent are not residents, really upsets me. It just people simply don't understand that it's a public library.
Right, right. There's there's always that mindset of of a minority of people who think all the other people are outsiders, so we can't do anything to to improve the community. Yeah, thanks, Lois. All right, let's move then on to agenda item number six, the San Marino Public Library Foundation Liaison Report, and that's Genevieve. Genevieve, here's where you punt to the other two. No, we we'll we'll get to them. They're actually later. You can say what you'd like to say.
I'm gonna leave majority of the meat to Cindy, and I just wanted to say how grateful I am. And I think the foundation is led by Cindy's great leadership and the very, very supportive group of members. They are given so much time and effort and creativity. It's just amazing work they're doing. And of course, with Kathy's constant support, I think this is gonna be a great teamwork. And I certainly felt excited about the upcoming event. Should I say, can I reveal a little detail?
Don't steal their thunder. Go wherever you want.
Okay, let me not do that. I think let Cindy.
You can you you're more than welcome to share because we have some things, Genevieve, that you haven't heard yet.
Oh, shoot. I missed out on something else. They have revealed their save the date card, and I think it looks fabulous. But of course, I don't have a visual to show you, and I'm sure Cindy will eventually to reveal that. Other than that, can I direct it to Cindy?
No, because she's farther down on the on the item. Item number eleven.
I'm not gonna steal their thunder, and I'm just gonna give you a little teaser. That's it.
Okay, great. Thanks, Genevieve. Let's move on then to agenda item number seven, ceremonial. This is kind of interesting. This is where we need to select a new chairperson and vice-chairperson for next year for twenty-two, twenty-three. So we are we are open to accepting nominations from the board members of for the chair for next year. If anyone wants to make a motion. Yes, Deborah?
Yes. Yes, I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we move to nominate Steve Doemeyer as and appoint him as the chairperson of the Library Board of Trustees for the next term. I don't know the order or the procedural order for where we can make our comments, but I have some. But I'm sure there are a lot of other people who would like to comment on that. Is that the procedure? We we open that after the proposal?
Yeah.
I mean, I'll defer to you, Kathy, since I've never done this before.
Yeah, no, we're all kind of navigating this together. So the group would individually make a motion to nominate. Okay, like like Deborah did, and then we might have others that want to nominate somebody else. So we want to make sure that is there any other nominations. Okay, so that would be where and and staff, we can facilitate that discussion. So now that we know that Steve should probably recuse himself, so is there any further nominations for chairperson? The other nominations. Okay, so currently, we have a motion to nominate Steve Doemeyer as chairperson. So I guess at this point, before we vote, we can open up for comment. I vote for yes.
I've had the very good fortune of 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 being on committees and volunteer efforts with Steve over the years. And he is, I'm sure you all agree, a rare bird. He is an individual that I can honestly say he welcomes the contributions of of everyone's opinion. There are very few leaders, I feel, that that do that honestly and openly. Steve genuinely seeks to hear everyone's thoughts. He believes they're important contributions, and he encourages that. And right away, that that's one my heart and my mind, that he will serve so well in another term, a full term ahead as as our leader, as the chairperson of the library board. So that's my 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 one thought I wanted to contribute.
My comment is, thank you.
I'm not sure if you can say that. Yeah, go ahead, Lois.
I agree wholeheartedly with Deborah. I think we should definitely reappoint Steve as our leader.
Okay, so any other comment? I know we need a second on the motion. We got Genevieve as the second, Kristen. So go ahead, Kristen, if you want to take roll call.
Okay, trustee Sedun.
I approve.
Trustee Osagüela. Trustee Derry. Trustee Chen.
Approve.
And Chairperson Doemeyer.
I approve, I guess.
Next, that sounds unanimous. So Steve will stay as our chairperson, and then we move on to do the same process for our vice-chairperson. And Steve, you can you can lead that.
Right.
So.
I don't have to recuse myself from that. All right. So so we're looking for anyone to nominate someone to be the vice-chair of this. And am I allowed to make a nomination? Can I?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, I would move to have Deborah Sedun be vice-chair since I have worked with her in the past, and she's a very able, competent, thorough person, and I would I would move to have her be the vice-chair for this next coming term. Any comments? Any other nominations? No, nominations and comments. Any other nominations? Genevieve or Kathy or Sandy or Lois, anyone want to nominate anyone else? Real hard-fought battle here. Is there is there a second for my motion?
I second.
Chris, it's up to you to pick who that was. Those hands went up so fast. Kelly had the good reaction time. Sorry.
Okay, let's do roll call. Trustee Sedun. Trustee Derry.
Yes.
Trustee Chen.
I approve.
And Chairperson Doemeyer.
I certainly approve. Great. Thank you very much, everybody. Look forward to serving you in the next year. Let's move on to our new business. Agenda item number eight, the approval of minutes. Hopefully, everyone received. The packet has had time to go over the minutes, and let's see what comments or questions anyone has on that. Did anybody have any corrections, questions on the minutes from our last meeting, June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two? Yes, Lois?
I like the new format. It's concise. It's easy to read. And the only thing that I was missing, we didn't have the financials. Is there some reason for that?
Yeah, this is an off month, so we will be we will the board will be seeing the financials in September.
Yeah, I found it very easy to read, too. I think it was very this is is this the new format we're using or is this the old format? Because this is the new.
So this is still the summary. So the minutes for this meeting will be the official.
Gotcha. Perfect, perfect. All right, great. It'll be it'll be shorter for the next one. All right. Any other discussion or comments or questions on the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Kristen, I'll let you do the roll.
Okay, trustee Sedun. Oh, sorry. Got to reorganize myself. Trustee Osagüela. Trustee Derry.
Approve.
Trustee Chen.
Yes.
Vice-chairperson Sedun.
Approve.
And Chairperson Doemeyer.
Approve. Can we? I know it's unofficial, but could we have the alternates weigh in on this as well, just in terms of their voting? Is there any reason not to include them? I'd like to have their voices heard. So can we record the?
I will honest, I'll have to check with City Clerk Baker, but I think alternate only vote when we don't have a quorum.
Gotcha. So I would I would love to have a a situation where we could get their opinions without official voting beforehand because I don't want their voices to be lost in this process. So maybe 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 that's something upon me to say before we vote, to call on the alternates to say what. Okay. All right. Sandy, remind me in case I forget to do that. Okay. I don't want to leave you and Vivvy out of this process. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We move on now to agenda item number nine, the Director and Library Manager Report. Kathy?
Okay, thanks, Steve. So this staff report for the kind of operational report begins in your packet on page eleven, eleven through seventeen, and I typically start with any significant personnel updates. And so we are so pleased to be welcoming our, finally, our adult services librarian full-time position that was vacant for several months. And Janelle Van Hook joined us on, I believe it was July, or yeah, July fifth, and we are so thrilled to have her. There's a little bio there about Janelle. I won't read that, but she's been here for a couple of weeks, has hit the ground running. And, you know, I don't want to speak for Linda, but I know that she has just made, you know, a difference in two short weeks in picking up and filling in with the the full-time responsibilities here at the library. And it's our hope that she might pop into the office a little early. So before the meeting is over, we're going to try to get her on the call to do a face, you know, connect a face with the name and do a quick, brief hello. And then the second item there is in reference to an update for our part-time staffing and our continued vacancies and where we're at with recruitment. Linda, I thought I would let Linda give a few comments about this. These are her direct staff and her full-timer supervised the the part-time cadre. So Linda?
Our part-time staff are continuing to take advantage of opportunities that are available elsewhere. So beginning on August, the first week of August, youth services will consist entirely of Tara. And as the same during that same week, adult services will be Janelle and Linda Lyons. So we are working to fill those open positions that it's a total of seven part-time positions we're looking to fill. There are two part-time librarian positions and five part-time library assistants. The good news is we have librarian, part-time librarian interviews slated for tomorrow. So, you know, hopefully, it won't it won't be too terribly long where we're, you know, plugging the holes.
Okay, thanks, Linda. It's our it's our hope that that we're going to be able to address how we can be a little more competitive in this part-time, you know, recruitment, hiring, and retention. We'll I'll be working with the city manager and the finance director in the upcoming budget cycle to really address if we can secure the resources that we need to be competitive because eighty percent of our workforce here at the library is part-time. And right now, we're just not as competitive as we could be, and that's that's part of the problem. As we all know, in all business sectors nationally, there's a labor shortage, but we are going to have to change. But we are going to have to change the way we do business if we're going to want to, you know, really build a stronger part-time team and not have this revolving door. So we, and then I know, Deborah, you had asked us for that report or kind of an understanding of how we benchmark ourselves against other cities in our area. And we'll be getting that ready for you in September.
Terrific.
And the third thing there is, at the bottom of the page, is Linda and I are going to be working to introduce our full-time librarian team to the community. And I sort of loosely am describing this as meet the new librarian team. Might come up as something a little more interesting, but that's going to be a fall reception, kind of like an open house. So more information on that to come. We're in the planning stages. But we have had some significant turnover. We want the community to really understand and know who their resources are. And we are fortunate to have four full-time librarians for a library of this size. That's really, you know, that's a good staffing level. And now we are introducing new folks and a new team, and certainly Linda is our library manager. So more information to come on that. The second page, 12, we've got our guest speakers here with us, the foundation folks who we'll hear more from a little bit later. And then we do have a little update there on the sale from the Friends Group. They've been running a book sale. And I'm sure Lois, next month, will maybe have some outcomes and some detailed information to share once you are able to go to their actual meeting. Then, for those of you who are, you know, new to this report, the upcoming events is sort of an area where we communicate with you, not only programming and events that we have going here at the library, but it's a combined upcoming, mark your calendar, get involved, you know. And then we have designated anything that is from the rec division with an asterisk. So if you see it and it's a straight listing without the asterisk, that means our librarian team are leading that program. But we certainly want you all as residents and board members to know that we'd love your support at those events and programs, not just the library ones. So mark your calendars, get involved, put the word, you know. Then we move on to page 13, and this is where we give you a little brief on events that are already happened. So some outcome-based reporting. And this is where Linda and the actual programmers provide that information to Linda and I. So I had a chance to read through all that. Then we move to page 14. And if you do have questions, we certainly will take some questions about this in the end. We give information on passports, the art gallery, a little information that we know about the art gallery and upcoming programming and things like that, which Deborah, as the liaison, already spoke to. We do like to connect an update related to our facilities. And as we collaborate with our public works department, they are our facility managers and do all of the significant maintenance. So we give a briefing there. Then we give a little brief on our marketing communication efforts, as well as social media and how we continue to build our followers there and our reach through not just our print, which is the community services guide, but also the social media outreach that we do. And again, with some more analytics about how we're building our following and expanding our reach. And then lastly, I like to mention if we've received any accolades and commendations for staff, we certainly want to champion all of our team and pass on all of those nice compliments and highlight staff for their hard work. And when it gets noticed, we want to champion them. So that can always be seen on the back. And this time, we had a shout out to Jeff and one also to Tara. So with that being said, let me just pass over to Linda. Is there anything else you want to add before we go to Q and A on our report, our combined report?
No, I think you got it all.
Okay, great. So if you guys have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions on the report?
Comments?
It sounds like despite all the staffing challenges and COVID and that a great amount of activity is going on at the library and is planned for this fall. And I feel like as trustees, it'll be wonderful going out and sort of being ambassadors to bring this up with people that we come across in our regular routines. And I'm looking forward to it, because there's so many things going on.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely. We love the advocacy and word of mouth is always, you know, effective, you know, advertising, so.
If there, does anybody have any, if there are no other comments, we should, we need a motion to receive and file the director and library manager report. Does anybody else have any other comments? Or do we have a motion?
I move to receive and file the library manager report and director's report.
Thank you, Deborah. Is there a second? Thank you. All right, Kristin, whenever you're ready to do a roll call vote.
Trustee Osaguala.
Approve.
Trustee Derry.
Approve.
Trustee Chen.
Approve.
Vice Chairperson Sedun.
Approve.
And Chairperson, Don Meyer.
Approve.
Motion passed.
Great, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to agenda item number 10, the fiscal year 2022-23 planning timeline. Kathy?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Steve. This can be found on page 17 of 17 in your packet. And we wanted to share this with everyone, as we do have several new chair people, as well as the alternates. This is a guiding document that helps staff, along with the, with you frankly, to break down how throughout every fiscal year items that we've, that we know are going to be on the agenda. I can tell you from experience that when Kristin and I first joined the team last September, this document didn't exist. So we had to create this document to pass on the knowledge to staff, as well as to hopefully educate and orient new board members to understand in a calendar year, what type of business are we conducting? Sort of as standing items. And then as things come up that are new, such as Deborah's request last month, to take a look at that staffing matrix. So it's somewhat of a structured document, but also fluid that we could add new things to. So starting with July, we're in a new fiscal year, such as at today's meeting, we did the reorganization, selecting the chair and vice chair. We're just sort of sharing the planning timeline, and we can all, hopefully, had a chance to already look at it. This, the reminder here, under July, we need to take new board pictures. So we would like to individually, I think Kristin and I agreed, Kristin, that we would make the announcement here. And then if you all could, or Kristin will send an email, say, we'd love to get your picture. Please schedule a time for Kristin to, one-on-one, to come in and take the picture. Is that what we agreed to, Kristin? Not trying to do like a group, everybody show up at this place and time. We thought it should be more convenient. So every year, we're going to need to take new pictures, right? So that's on here. Anything that's listed in blue is a new item that was added, not sort of a standing item. So we added that literary libations are an update from the foundation this month in 20, or yeah, in July of 22. We have the foundation folks that are here with us. Then Steve and the group, for the August, as we move to August, we probably need to discuss if if the group wants to have an August meeting, or if you feel it's necessary. Most commissions and boards in our community in San Marino do go dark, or they bypass a meeting. By statute, it says, at least this commission, that we meet once a month. But in San Marino and many other cities, they choose different months throughout the year to not have meetings for various reasons. Here in San Marino, many commissions opt to not meet, because it's high vacation month, school's starting, those kinds of things. So we sort of need to establish that for this year. And then also, the December meeting is another one that is up for discussion. And then as we continue down through the document, you'll notice we do financially, for those of you who might have started as alternates, we used to, city staff used to be required to submit financials every single meeting, okay? We have modified that to a quarterly reporting process instead of every single time. And so you'll see that in September. And then Steve has asked us on the September to bring forward D, item D, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to jump. I should have gone sequentially here. 3B, the library closure calendar for next year, that does go to council in November. So we will bring that item to you to say, here's the closure dates for the library. And then we'll run it past you, everybody's in agreement, and then we have to get it to council. Because that is, council's the only one that can approve any major closures of city facilities. And then I know historically, there was a joint meeting with city council in October. I believe the city manager is going to be leading that discussion as to when that, that's on a bigger city calendar. But we will keep you apprised as to when that joint meeting will happen. Then item D and E have been added by chair and vice chair. So Chairman Don Meyer has asked us at our last meeting, planning meeting for this, just last week, to please bring forward strategic plan accomplishments versus outstanding items. That is a rearview mirror report for the last approved strategic planning document that the library had. I wasn't here, Linda wasn't here, but, and then Kristin wasn't here either. So we're going to do a fair amount of research about what actually got accomplished in that plan and that roadmap and those strategic priorities, and what didn't. Okay, so we're going to bring a little bit of an update on that. And then we'll probably have some discussion about updating that document and what it's going to take to get it updated for a new roadmap going forward. And then Deborah, you'll see, and Steve, the part-time salary and benefits analysis versus other local cities. So we added that. So I won't go through the whole thing. Hopefully, you have, that gives you a little understanding about what this document is, why it's important to keep us all organized and understanding every single meeting, what you can expect to be reviewing. Okay, any questions or comments? Did I miss anything?
The only comment I would have is, Kathy, thanks for putting this together. I'm a big fan of having templates and knowing what to expect as we go through. And then we can add things as we move forward. But just having just sort of a marching orders, it's helpful. And I'm sure the board appreciates knowing what could be coming up in the year to come. And then any additions, like we had in September, the two items are very helpful there. Would this be the appropriate time for me to mention that we're going to have some homework to do, board, in terms of reading from the fantastic binder that we were given? That includes agenda, let's see, where is it? Number seven, the strategic plan 2016-2021. I'm going to ask all the board members to carefully read through that. This is done by the previous folks.
Yeah, it's in your new binder. It's in your new binder. Yep, under tab seven.
Tab seven. So read through that and get familiar with it. Because the reason this was added was, I have a frustration with committees that get put together and they come up with a five-year plan, and here's what we're going to do. And then five years later, no one's going back to go, what happened? Where do we stand? So I wanted to make sure that the plans that were outlined by the hardworking people back in 2015 for 2016 and beyond, you know, what was accomplished and what wasn't. I know it's a big ask of the current staff to do this. They weren't here, and they're going to have to look at stuff. So that's why we're giving them two months to do it. And then we can in September talk about what was achieved then, and then what would be the best process for visioning, looking forward, whether, you know, probably not something that can be done in-house. Probably will have to hire outside people to look ahead and envision with the future. But it just, I want to make sure we're having benchmarks and looking back and going, what actually got done? What still needs to be done moving forward? So thank you for adding that, Kathy. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this timeline? Hearing none. I don't, we don't need a motion to accept it, I'm assuming? It's just a presentation, correct?
Right.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you so much for that. Yes?
We actually did have it as a receive and file. And then we also wanted to see if there were any other items that people wanted to add to the list.
Great, thank you, Kristin.
Thanks, Kristen.
So does anybody have any other items they'd like to add to the timeline at this time? Kathy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Kathy with a K and a Y at the end. Couldn't you tell my pronunciation? Sorry. Kathy Osaguala, trustee Osaguala, anything you wanted to add to this?
Just a quick question. So there will be no meeting in August and no meeting in December, right?
That is currently laid out. That's kind of for us to decide. I'm kind of feeling that I would prefer to have you all take the time that you would spend at our August meeting, reading over the strategic plan for last time. So if that's amenable to everybody. Okay, trustee Chen?
It's fine.
Okay, good. Trustee Derry, any comments, questions, any additions to the timeline?
It's fine.
Okay, great. Vice Chair Sedun?
Great idea.
Great. Alternate, alternate Wu, what do you think?
It's fine.
Okay, all right, great. All right, we will need a motion to receive and accept the planning timeline?
Yeah.
For 2022-23?
Yeah, I move to approve the planning timeline for 2022-23.
Thank you so much. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Genevieve. Kristin, take it away.
Trustee Osaguala.
Approve.
Trustee Derry.
Approve.
Trustee Chen.
Approve.
Vice Chairperson Sedun.
Approve.
And Chairperson, Don Meyer.
Approve.
Motion passed.
I'm assuming you were in favor of it as well. Okay, all right. Well, let's move on to agenda item number 11, so literary libations update. And will, is it Sue or Cindy? Who's giving the presentation here?
I'll let Cindy. Cindy, our fearless leader.
Well, first, thank you very much for inviting us to join you this morning. I haven't been to a trustee meeting in quite a while, so this was very nice. And there's so many familiar phrases as well, so that's always nice, too. I first, as Steve had pointed out, Sue, this one, Nathan, is our new president this year. So if you have not met her, please make a point to stop by. She volunteers also at the Friends Bookshop, two days out of the month, okay? So she's truly being a supporter there, the library. But so literary libations this year. So as many of you have been to our delicious destinations, this is kind of a turn on delicious destinations. We decided to go literary this year. And instead of the library, the library is still going to be transformed. And also, I should say thank you to the library trustees, as well as to city council for agreeing to allow us to have the library closed on October 15, so we can transform that library. We're going to, instead of becoming destinations, we're going to actually create literary vignettes. That's how we're describing them, okay? Since we now live in a world where everyone loves to have a good picture taken, these are our vignettes we're going to create. And we're also hoping to perhaps have some help from people. This is something that we're also going to pitch out to you as trustees, of how you also might be able to support us. Since it's literary libations, we are going to ask, we are asking all of the foundation board members to become a literary character. to become a literary character that evening. So if the trustees would like to join us and also become a literary character that evening, we would enjoy that greatly, okay? We also may invite a few actors to help as well that evening, to help create that environment, so, okay? So a little different experience this time. Okay. And we're also going to have, we're gonna have some of the things that we normally have, like we normally have our silent auction. Though this year, we're going to have two silent auctions, an online silent auction and an in-person silent auction. So if you really want to get a deal, you need to go online and you need to come to the event because they're gonna be different items. Okay, so we're doing that, we're also going to, we've asked Chief Encanto to hopefully join us again to be our paddle raise MC. He was so great at doing it the last time he did in 2019. So we're hoping he'll be able to join us again to do that. We are also going to potentially do opportunity drawings. We're trying, we're working on that. We want to try doing that. We've only done that once before. So we're trying to a different, we're gonna take a different angle on that and see how we can make that happen. And we also, we're doing, I have a decorations committee this year that I believe is five people. So there's been quite a lot of ideas flying about. So that that should be actually quite interesting. And what else was I gonna share? Let's see. So we're doing our sponsorships, we're doing our list of sponsorships. We actually, we had to, we had to really work on that, I had to really work on that. We have two new treasuries this year, which I think you know, which are Jennifer Chen and Sandra Chen. And they really helped me kind of figure out some things because our costs have gone up as you, as you've noticed in your own lives. So things are kind of a little bit more expensive to go out to eat, to do a few things. So our ticket price has gone up this year. Our ticket price this year is going to be 175. After doing the preliminary conversations with all the vendors and seeing what their, what they are confronting. Literally, I'm like even the printer, the purchase, like, well, depending on when you can send me everything, it was going to depend a little bit on even some of her pricing. Printers are evidently having just one heck of a time getting materials. I will say we are having Alexander's Catering return. So those of you who've been to one of our delicious, delicious destinations events where we've had Alexander's Catering, they have an amazing ability to create just really great food that matches whatever directive we give them. So they are also our partners. So as our title suggests, literary libations, they are actually our partners in actually finding representatives from, I believe it's three wineries right now, two craft breweries and a whiskey tasting for the evening. So we're getting all the liquor. So they've been really great. We're gonna do actually an opportunity with them where people will also be able to purchase that evening potentially for your holiday coming up. So if you're having holiday parties and you enjoy what you're tasting, you have an opportunity to not only be educated by the representative of that vineyard or, you know, whichever, whichever liquor vendor, but then you can also bring that to your own party for that holiday, hopefully. And we also will receive a percentage of that. So we're very excited about working with Alexander's. So we're gonna, we're, we're hoping that will be, you know, our, I think a real calling card to the community. We're excited about it this year, and we also anticipate that we will get a really nice support. 2019, we had record, we had a record number of people come out support. And we're really hoping that that happens again this year. So now as trustee members, what we're hoping is we can also not only obviously be representatives to help share the news about literary libations, okay? But also, you know, whether you'll soon be getting in the mail, okay? But I'm just gonna fair warn you, you'll soon be getting in the mail a letter about our sponsorships and, but we'd also, if you also have an ability to join us and help us with our silent auction, we would love that. Silent auction is always tricky, you know, and we're trying to, I've actually contacted several different types of vendors this year for the silent auction, trying to work with the literary libations theme. So things that are a little bit more maybe theatrical, let's say, going that way a little bit, something a little bit more liquor oriented also, just trying to change it up a little bit, giving people some other opportunities. And so we look for, we look forward to, one, to join us, two, if you can support us in, in any of those levels of being a sponsor, purchasing tickets, help us with silent auction, we would greatly appreciate that. Okay, does anyone have any questions or Sue, do you, would you like to add anything?
The only thing I would say is that I think, I mean, we're, we're talking to a wonderful group of people here. Many, many, many dedicated volunteers within the city for probably decades. And I, I really urge you if, to please keep this date open, October 15th. And please join us, I mean, you know, like Rome, all roads lead to the library. We truly are, as you know, the center of our community. And it would be lovely to see not only all of you there and especially all the council there, we'd be very happy, Ken. And, you know, please come. And I think it's a terrific way that we connect with almost all different areas within the city, you know, as, as Chief John is hosting, or is gonna be our, our paddle raiser. But he's just, you know, we all know, wonderful. And our council and other board members and definitely, you know, we have school board members who are there. And, you know, it's gonna be a terrific event with amazing food and kind of fun, kind of a pre-Halloween attire you could use later on, a couple, you know, a few weeks later. It's, it's, it's gonna be a terrific experience. And as Deborah, who's been part of us for so long, I, we know we'll see you there. And I hope that, you know, you, you all can not only attend, but if you have opportunities to look for items that might, we might be able to offer to our community as auction items, we'd very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other, thank you so much. Any other questions from the board for Sue and Cindy? I, I, and these are just based on past Delicious Destinations events, this is gonna be a wonderful time. And quite frankly, the dress up part, I, I'm really excited to see council member Udi dresses William Shakespeare. So that'll be a fun thing to look forward to. Kathy, did you have something you wanted to say?
I just have a question for Cindy and Sue. Do you guys happen to have a, like a how to get involved document that that lists out the sponsor opportunity, the ticket sales, the silent auction, and then the call to action of how to, you know, how to, like a fulfillment form? Or is there anything like that?
I can, I can provide something.
You'll send that out to them if you'd like.
Oh, yeah. Okay, that would be great.
Like, a lot of opportunities there. And then they, they can also share with and pass on, you know, the, the opportunity for certainly sponsorship and silent auction items.
Without a doubt.
Yeah, Kathy?
And also the, if there's any opportunities, if you need high school volunteer kids to decorate the, you know, the afternoon before, they're always willing to, you know, step in a couple of hours, they're desperate to get hours for their social. But especially the boys, the boys can lift things, they can do the heavy load. We don't have to kill our backs, we use all our kids to do the type. So if there's any opportunities and, you know, if you need me to, I can help you guys recruit some guys to help the day before or the afternoon before.
Thank you, thank you. We, we always have things like that, believe me.
I use my kids all the time for those things, so they, they travel.
Thank you very much.
Genevieve?
I actually have a little concern. I think LA County is having a decision on by tomorrow or something, they're voting on indoor masking. If that get approved, how's that gonna impact our event?
Yeah, I've been watching that. And so it looks like the, on the indoor masking, I've, well, I've read a couple of different things. And so they're looking at two to four weeks potentially. And so I'm playing a numbers game here on the dates, okay? Two to four weeks, you know, gets us to the end of August. And so we're in the middle of October. I'm also playing a whole thing with contracts with vendors also in case it goes another way. And how do we protect ourselves with deposits and everything? And, you know, if we have to ultimately postpone something, it's a, it's a whole new world for us, definitely. And I feel like we're almost, we're literally watching this on a week to week, which is, doesn't seem to be actually really any different than how it's been for the last year. I wanted to do an event last fall and we opted not to because things started getting to be a little just, you know, it's gonna, it was gonna require too much. So I, at this point, I'm gonna wait to the end of this week because I think Friday was a really a drop-down dead date for regarding masking indoors. So I'm gonna wait to see and then we'll see what happens. We're waiting, we have three healthcare people on our board currently, and they definitely have three different opinions. So I think we're gonna be looking to them. And Sue's husband also is in the health, is also a doctor. So I think we'll be looking to, you know, spouses as well to kind of help us figure out and navigate this. It's a whole new world for us, it's something, you know, we're the party people. For any of you that have served on the foundation board, we're all about giving a good party. So we're definitely just having to maneuver through this. So we're gonna, we are going to be cautious about it, Jen.
I think, yeah, I think that's important and it's a great question to, to, to bring up, Genevieve. Thanks for that. I, I, it's also nice to, I was on Friday night enjoying the concert in the park. These are the community events that kind of bring us all together and having those two other ones upcoming are, are pretty exciting. And then, of course, literary libations, getting together at the library, it will be a lot of fun, too. And that's what makes part of this, being part of this community so, so wonderful. I see Janelle's joined us. Is there any other comments on literary libations? Any other questions or concerns for that agenda item? All right, then, there's no, there's no voting for that that we need. Kathy, do you want to introduce Janelle to us?
Yeah, Janelle, thanks for joining us. If you want to unmute yourself. And then, yeah, and I know you're having, struggling with your camera there. I know if you could tilt it down a little, but yeah, and maybe I almost feel like I should, I should hand off to Linda. This is Linda's first hire as a first full-time, for a full-time position. I certainly was part of that selection process and I'm so thrilled that, you know, Linda and I were able to invite Janelle to join our team. Linda, is there anything you want to say before we let Janelle just say hi real quick? I just got here and I said, please jump on. So Linda, do you want to do a formal intro?
Yes, this is Janelle Van Hook, she's down here in my screen. So hello, this is your formal intro to the library board. I have to say she's been an absolute delight. Someone mentioned earlier, she's hit the ground running, she absolutely has. She's more than pulled her weight, you know, just stepping in and picking up. So we're really, really pleased to have Janelle and all of her experience and enthusiasm that she's bringing to the library. Janelle?
So I'm Janelle Van Hook. I'm excited to be here in San Marino. I grew up in the Bay Area, but I went to college at Cal Poly Pomona. I stayed in the Southern California 14 years and I went back in 2016, even against my will. But it was a good thing, I got to spend time with my family and see them. But then when I was able to apply for San Marino, I jumped at it because I want to come back to Southern California. And I saw this library when they first built it in 2008. I was living in Diamond Bar, but I drove all the way out here because I like, I like the Huntington. And when I knew they built the new library, I went to see it and I was like, this library is beautiful. I want to work here one day. And then that didn't work out and I was very sad. And then when it got posted again in 2022, I was like, I'm gonna try. So, yeah, I'm excited to be here. And I look forward to, you know, doing programming and becoming part of the community. And I think everyone's been welcoming so far, so it's nice to meet all of you.
We're thrilled to have you, Janelle. Thanks so much. Yeah, and you, and you get to see two of the foundation people, too, as well. The, the director and president are on this call, as well as our council member and, you know, the other staffers. So it's, it's really nice having you join the team and we're, we're excited to have you.
Thanks, Janelle, for joining us.
You're welcome.
Thank you, you can, I know I interrupted.
Get back to work now. It's like, the only time you'll have to suffer through all of us, all right. All right, did, so that's our last agenda item. Did we receive any written communications to the library board of trustees? Kristen? Or any other public writings anybody wants to publish? Nothing there, great. All right, then, did I, we are adjourned until September 26th, until Kathy makes a comment, go Kathy, go.
Sorry, I have two just fast things. Just we wanted to follow back up with you on two items. I should have said it when I had the, the director. The, the 1015 closure for literary libations that went to council at, on the 13th, obviously got approved. So that's kind of a given, but we, we did as staff take that item to council. So wanted to for, let you know about that. And that council did approve us moving from action minutes to, or to action minutes from summary minutes. So again, it was formally approved by council. So I failed to mention those two things in my notes. Now I'm really done.
No worries. And, and, and we're, Laura and I are excited to see what the shorter minutes are gonna look like. Since we love these minutes, like, oh, no, it's gonna be different. So, so it looks, we need to be saving time, our staff is overworked. We need to have them operating as efficiently as possible and anything that's extraneous, we don't want them doing. Thank you, everybody, for participating today. I really appreciate it. I'll throw in one more time, if you can, please join the city council meeting this Friday, 8:30 at the, the soon-to-be refurbished San Marino Center, we'd greatly appreciate it. We joked at our task force meeting about showing up in hard hats because there's, there's stuff falling down there. It's, it's gonna be ragtag, it can't be demolished, it's just gonna be have this ugly fence around it if, if we don't move forward. So appreciate everybody's participation in that and, and thanks for participating in this meeting. And with that, we are adjourned until September 26th. Thanks, everyone.
Everybody.
Bye-bye.
See you in September.
Thank you. Thank you.